Are we not speaking in regards to, because it's listed as a four-bedroom, two-bedroom home. Very common for platforms, and it was approved as such. We're not discussing that is as much as the use. The initial use on the application says one thing, and until they use it for something else, there's nothing in the process that will make it stand out until they put that sign out, bring in a bunch of different but not related folks, that's the usage. So the inspection process would not catch that because four-bedroom, two baths is a common designation for a home.
I think part of what we're saying is when they submitted this, they submitted some drawings. And if it says that in Alta Vista subdivision, if it says that homes need to be faced a certain way, and they have the home on the drawings and plans faced the other way, that would be a red flag from the beginning. The dialogue, because if the home's supposed to be facing front and the square footage or the lot was too small for them to construct the type of house they were looking for anyway, which is why the house looks like this. The question or concern that we have as far as on council, and I think some of the citizens, is understanding the process of someone comes in, they want to build something in a neighborhood, they may have these restrictions or not. Do we, on the application, if they said, don't they have to turn in some plans, drawings? Who was supposed to certify the drawings, right, so, because there's someone missing from this conversation?
Let me help you. The city ordinances do not enforce an HOA's homeowners association deed restrictions. The restrictions speak to it facing the street. The city ordinances do not. So it's not the city's job to do anything but make sure that they follow with the zoning, which is Zoned R1, and that's what they checked on the application. And until they used it for something differently, there's no red flag for us.
Well, so I guess my, it's more than the zoning issue. We're saying that, council is saying that from the perspective of them building the house, if they submitted plans and drawings, does that, is that not part of the process? So if I submit drawings for my house, I gotta submit how the house is gonna face and what the merits. What you said, it could be true, it's true, that we don't, we don't, it doesn't, for us, whether it faces one way or the other is not our issue, but the issue is on, in the drawings, should have been laid out, how the rooms were, how the doors opened and all that information. And from professional standpoint, we should have gotten a sign off for someone. I don't know if your company was doing the inspection at this time, or whether it be the city engineer, or whoever looked at the plans, that then moved it to your process. So we're missing the middle process, and then your company, Bier Veritas, checks off piece by piece, plumbing, electrical, and so is it on Bier Veritas to catch what this is about as far as the zoning? And I'm not sure if it's on them to do that. So the question is, are we saying this is R1? So we know there are many homes in Prairie View that are single-family that may have multiple people living there because there's no defined statute on what that is in the city. It really is not, does not get into what that is defined. This will be probably a case, a test case. The question I'm asking is on this property, and maybe for the people who live in Alta Vista, do they have one door, or do they have four doors? I think then we start talking about the difference between a single-family home and a triplex or a quadruplex versus the one door. So if we're talking about the discussion on certificate of occupancy, what is our attorney saying in reference to where we at in this process of a structure being there? It's been approved to be up, and what you're saying is they don't have a final inspection. So what penalties should they now have to come back before, to the city? Because they have people living there and they don't have a DCO.
They got their final inspection. I went out there for those three items that I was telling you about. I checked the electrical panel, the driveway was cored, even though it was completed without an inspection. That's the way it's marked on the report, and I verified hot water. Those were the three items that I verified. That's also when we found out, because they have a front door and a back door like a normal home. And they've got doors on their bedrooms like a normal home. Whenever they, at that point, whenever they determined to lease those four bedrooms, because the normal house, you know, four bedroom, two bath, we see that all the time. I inspect those all the time. We went through the entire, it went through the plan review process. What is there is, and I cannot get to the intent, but it appeared that the intent, of the original intent was they were gonna do student housing there. Looking back at it now, but we have no way in the process to do that because it went to plan review. There again, you know, we don't enforce deed restrictions. We enforce the building codes. The structure was drawn to code, and it was built to code.
In plan review, is there something that should have triggered, that we should have done in-house? Or like, how does it come back to trigger what you just said? And since you did do a final inspection for those three things that were listed, and which means that they passed, then we're now into the, with the attorney on legal. What is, since they have now passed everything, the three things you said, kind of where are we at? And what would have caught the plan review? Is that something that should have happened in-house, or is that something that Bier Veritas should have done?
And Mayor Ellen, if I could jump in so that she doesn't get too far into the details of the, you know, so that you don't get too far into the details of the court case. I think the question for the city council tonight is whether or not the structure currently satisfies what the application is for. Does it currently satisfy and meet inspections for a single-family certificate of occupancy? And has it now passed all of those inspections would be the council question. Separate from that, whether they're fined for going in there prior to having a certificate of occupancy at all, or whether they're fined for having a wrong certificate of occupancy and continuing to use it can be a daily violation that goes through the court. It depends on if they stop at this point or not. But the question for the city council is whether or not, for the application you have on file, which is single-family certificate of occupancy, whether or not it has met the requisites. Because when you get into process, you remember the night I talked to you about, shall issue the certificate if it meets it? So all of the rest of this, any violation, anything like that, is for the court system. Your question is whether or not the certificate of occupancy that has been applied for still remains passed or not. The rest of it can be turned over through code enforcement to the court system, and they can deal with them.
So does it, you said court, it's like, is there a case, something on this?
I don't know whether or not a case has been filed or not yet, but we have discussed how to proceed doing that, so that would be the appropriate forum.
So basically, I mean, because just judging off what she's just said, when speaking towards the structure in itself, the structure itself meets the standard of all-one residence. And so if there was gonna be an issue with the structure, it should have been caught at the beginning of the process and not at this stage of the process, correct?
Well, it could still be caught prior to a cer, I mean, we don't have a certificate of occupancy. If she's caught something in the meantime.
She's already approved the final inspection, so shall and must, right?
Unless she has found something since to take it back.
Unless there's an issue, and you've had residents share that the use is different than the application. And that's really the issue. The use is different than the single-family resident.
So what would be the consequence for that? That doesn't just allow them from inhabiting the building, we just find them?
No, actually, it does, because it's Zoned R1, it's applied for R1, and it's being used as R2 or R3.
But she's saying in the inspection process that she used to look at the structure, it meets all the, she's saying it meets all the qualifications for R1. And the final inspection says that, now the question is, so is, we're getting into what the court should be doing, in which the court should be telling us all the other things. The question is, have we met the statutory things that were used against us in reference to Panther Hill? To, if we've met, if they've met all that, do we issue it or we not issue it? And then the question is, how do we not have this happen again? Because again, what plan, I'm just, I'm just go back to the plans. If you seen the plans of the house, when we received the application, we should have received the plan. When it was signed off on, we should have seen the plans. And I'm trying to say, how did we get this far? Because R2, whether it is, whether it is, the R1 or R2 is a different dialogue when the structure's not even here.
Mr. Mayor, it's my understanding that the structure could be the same for either, and that she's saying it was appropriate for a single-family. They're utilizing it for a multifamily. But the structure, it wouldn't have been caught because it's the same structure. So if you approve a certificate of occupancy for what the application is for, I'm not saying it's going to do them any good, because they still should not be utilizing it.
So I guess the question goes to, how do you address, if it meets all of the standards for all-one, how do we speak towards intent? So when you, like, when we talk about enforcement, right? So if I buy a home, and it's an all-one residence, and I live in it for 10 years, then I move out, and I rent it out to, you know, students, the usage has changed, right? So does my certificate of occupancy, the usage didn't change?
Which is the issue. The issue is, we're trying to legislate something that's already defined. There is no definition. If the house meets the standard of the R1, we can't change it because we feel like of, now, again, it's dependent, if they had four doors, four doors on the outside, then that changes the intent. But they have one door, and so the question, I don't know if that's for us, and so I'm trying to see why is...
Let me help you, I think I might be able to help you. Because this is on a different scenario, but it's from our council. Basically, on another application, someone is applying for building duplexes in an R1. And the simple interpretation is, they needed to go get a zoning change to do duplexes in a R1. The other piece has to do with multi, multiple-family residences are only allowed in the R2, R3 designation. It's the use that makes the difference. You're focusing, and I understand it. If it could have been caught, fine, but as you clearly stated, it's built within what the application says. But prior to, the only use has been multiple-family. There's no point in us having the zoning if we've got residential concerns, and we're just saying, issue COs. Certificate of occupancy is a tool, and until they have that, there is something that council can or cannot do.
So, so if I could, if tomorrow they went back and used it appropriately, you would have denied them a certificate of occupancy for something they've clearly passed and clearly applied for. They are incorrectly using it. Apparently, that would be up to the judge to make that determination. Certainly sounds like it, and I'm not discounting anything that anyone's saying, but you're not issuing them a use permit. You're issuing a certificate of occupancy for a single-family dwelling in an R1. You're not approving their use as an R2 use. So the question before you is whether or not the application before you is appropriate, whether or not that structure meets the requisites for the single-family structure in the R1, and the use situation is up to enforcement. You're in the legislative branch, the enforcement branch is separate.
Councilman Jones.
We are talking about item 11, right?
Yes, sir.
All right, it says discussion, it doesn't say possible take action. So I'll move that we move this to the next meeting, so that way we could possibly take action.
Yep, I mean, well, was that a motion? I don't know what that.
I move that we move item 11 to the next city council meeting, so that way we could possibly take action.
I second the motion. It's been properly moved and seconded, that item 11, discussion on 224 Oak Street, certificate of occupancy, be moved to the next agenda. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
All right.
Councilman Randall?
So if you go look at item number 10, once we pass item number 10, it's not coming back to us for action anyway, because it's gonna go back to the man's discretion. That's why now it's an argument.
And who said, and who said we pass item number 10?
So, yeah, it would make that sense, my unreadiness, I have an unreadiness, even though I seconded the motion, so we can have a conversation. I think, from what we heard today, this is definitely from Bier Veritas as far as the process. I just want to make sure that we're not getting off on the situation. We, so the information that was provided us by the citizens in reference to other applications, I think last meeting, showed that it was a single-family, it was signed off through the process, and then Bier Veritas went through the process. You said currently, right now, they have a final inspection. Did they pass the final inspection for a single-family?
Yes.
And so is there anything that your company or you would say that why we shouldn't issue them a CO? Because usually, we don't, you know, usually they would have, this would have been occupied and moved on. And so is there something that your company, with your expertise, that you would communicate to council on why the CO for whatever they put on the paper, which is the single-family information we have? Is there a reason why we, is there, what are your thoughts?
Let me interject real, because I think, because the attorney, he, she's hit this several times, and I think we're kind of, we're kind of missing it, about, you know, our role in this process. Like, we legislate, and so we've heard in this process about certificates of occupancies and dealing with other developments, that once they have given them the approval to occupy, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, then the city shall and must issue a certificate of occupancy. Now, if there's an issue with the usage, it has to go to municipal court, and court legal action has to be taken before we can do anything else about it, correct?
That would be correct.
Right, only there's an issue with what you just stated. They never issued approval to occupy. They occupied prior to the final, which is a totally different citation violation. So what you're saying is different because they never gave authority to occupy.
Right, but what I'm saying is they have it now, and so even that part is still judicial. That still goes to the, we still have no control or anything over it. That goes to the courts, because they issued it. Now, I'm talking about moving forward, because they've already issued their, they've granted their final inspection, the city shall and must issue a certificate of occupancy. Now, when we discuss their usage and their usage isn't not being appropriate, then that's when our building inspector and our, and you as the mayor, that's when you take it to the municipal court. And then whatever action from the municipal court dictates the action that we can take forward from our respective positions.
And so, and so council member Randall, that's why I moved that we move it to the following meeting, so that way we can also approve our building official, and we won't get into the issue of whether or not we should give out a CO.
Because right now, council is on the book for that. The second thing is, have we, what is, in this CO, I guess, is there a fee, or have we already identified the penalty for them occupying this building without a CO?
No, that would be up to the municipal court, and that would be up to the code officer as to whether he issued a citation every single day while they continue to occupy it. It can be a separate violation for every single day they occupy it.
So this isn't totally different from the CO, this is just violation of buildings? Okay.
You've heard the questions, all those in favor say aye. The posts have the same right, the records show it's unanimous. Going back to item one, discussion and possible action on the approval of city council meeting minutes dated March 11, 2019.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Randall.
How long do we approve the city council meeting minutes dated March 11, 2019?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, item one, approved and accepted. All those in favor say aye.
All right.
Okay.
My unreadiness is, did we change the process or the format of the minutes? Did someone else do it this time?
Same person.
Okay, so I guess if we all made, if we all passed it, that's what the motion passed. And if we, our names are listed different, are listed down, that means there was someone who abstained or something? Because like, some of whom has the name listed, and then some of them just said motion passed.
Yeah, that's happened several times, but you're right, it would be consistent.
Okay.
Yeah, that was a motion, you're right.
And mine is, when our first go on city council, residents receive minutes, why don't we do that at the moment? And my second question would be, if the minutes state one thing, and we ask for something to be on the next agenda, then why does it continue not to be on the regular city council agenda? The minutes, the statement will be asked to be moved to the following meeting, and it still doesn't seem to follow over.
Minutes, I think, for, they either post it online, or they're, if they request it in writing, I think there's a fee to make a copy.
Yeah, they've never been passed out.
Yeah, not the minutes, but the agenda. But again, the, are we uploading, I guess that's a good question, are we uploading the minutes?
Yes.
So they can, yeah.
Once they're approved.
So they'll be able to go online.
Yeah, agenda goes up initially, then after y'all approve it, then...
So my second question was, if it shows in the minutes, why doesn't it follow over to next agenda?
If you want us to answer you, why don't you give us specifically which one you're referring to, so we can try to address it and move on. Your time.
I don't want to hold up the meeting, so I'll send an email.
Any other additions? All those in favor approving the minutes, say aye. Posts have the same right, I just have it. Item two, discussion and possible action on an ordinance amending the city code to amend the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code, Chapter 1. And that would be Attorney Charlie. I'm just kidding, yes, counselor. I know that you're much nicer than he is.
Yeah, so this is just something that inadvertently wasn't reviewed prior to the last meeting. It should have been part of the change of the International Property Maintenance Code. The only change that this is, so that you know, it's nothing recommended by us, it was the carryover from, in 2017, you passed the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code. These are the changes to Chapter 1 that were made at that time. So they were just carried over to be changed in the exact same way as they were the prior time.
So just a typical updating of this particular body of laws?
It's updating your last ordinance to reflect your last ordinance.
We made that, we made that motion last meeting. I think the issue was the addendum, and so if I can get, Mr. Mayor, where did we get this addendum from, and what did it change?
That's what I'm telling you. That addendum is from me, and it is part of your 2017 ordinance, changing the 2015 International Property Maintenance Code. And I did not know it existed until Ms. Johnson went back into the records after I was carefully reading the code, stating that it was in the prior ordinance. So we probably found it about three weeks ago, or was it?
I don't know.
Oh, it was Ms. Cortez, pardon me. But it was part of the original 2015 adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code. So it's nothing that we are substantively recommending, it's nothing that you have to accept. It was just a carryover from your past edition of what you had changed at that time.
So you said, so the reason why I ask this, because I had a conversation with Mr. Zach, and he didn't know where this Exhibit A came from.
That's right, because I drafted it, and I had to explain it to him, yes.
And so if we go through the sections, there were some sections, because it wasn't just like city, like, one of them had to strike through, where we were just putting like City of Prairie View to different trade, who we were. But like, so none of these changes are our own changes to fit our city specifically? You're saying these adoptions are come out of the Property Maintenance Code from somewhere else?
No, that is not what I'm saying.
Okay, let me hear you.
These are city-specific, and they are more changes than just filling in the blank to say Prairie View. But they're not changes that we made, they're changes that the Prairie View City Council made in 2017 when they adopted the 2015 code.
In other words, what you updated originally left out Attachment A that the city adopted two years ago.
Yes.
And all you did was go back and add what was already in there before, this one?
What, yes, what had already been changed by the city council in 2017.
So the stuff that's in here is things that we've already voted on.
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Randall?
I move that we approve the order amending the city code to amend the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code, Chapter 1.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded, that the council adopt the city code to amend the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code, Chapter 1, you're ready? You ready for the questions?
I have an readiness.
Councilman Rowland?
All right, so like, let's go to page nine. It says, means of appeal for public hearings. Talks about how does the order become a member, how does it set up the conference, like, all these things, and it struck through. That means it doesn't exist? Or what section has been updated to stand in the place of all those things? Because those are the fail safes that citizens would go to if they had an issue to get their issue, if they had wanted a hearing, this is how they would, this is their fail safe. And so if we strike through all this, where does this come back up again?
So this is the very specific issue that we have referred to staff to explain. So I don't know who the mayor has directed in staff to explain this.
Let me get that question again, if you would, Councilor.
So on page, let's, for example, page nine. What we may have passed before, we're saying, we're saying that, I striking out A, 111.2, 111.21, that is the process in which a citizen, if they had an issue, would be able to get a remedy or have a hearing. We've struck through this, where does it, in this process, do, where in this process does it help us to be able to say where citizens will get their due process? Because again, that's why I asked the questions, I feel I have an unreadiness in passing this without making sure that citizens have a due process, when it seems like everything we struck out is their ability to be able to have their voice heard.
Okay, now, 11...
Yeah, like the last page, 111.2. Like, how does one membership of the board, and then it had something about a code official that struck out, which we just adopted the kind of what, so is it, is it the code official, or is it a committee if a citizen wanted to come back?
So I can tell you this much, in the International Property Maintenance Code, they set aside a separate board, and what most cities in Texas do is adopt that board as a city council, which is what you had done up here.
Which is what we've done here.
It just keeps it from being a separate board.
So in other words, what you're speaking to from a membership standpoint? The council covers that, because the council is the appeal board. So you don't need the membership, because it's...
I get that, but like, I'm, I get that. I'm reading this, and it doesn't say that. And so it could be, I don't, again, I'm not the expert. I'm saying that if you minus this process of the board, it should have been A, city council, sensitive to us.
And it is, in what you passed last week... In the, in what you passed last week, um, is where that particular section is. It's in, I think, six point one oh one and this is six point one oh two. Um, it, it says, city council shall act as the board under the International Property Maintenance Code.
Just example, just to give it.
Okay.
Any other readiness? What's the world council? Oh, a call for the questions? That was just an readiness on the motion, right?
Right.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Record show is unanimous?
I'm a, I'm a, uh, against, I'm opposed.
Okay, three, four, one against, the motion passes. Okay, item three, discussion and possible action to provide direction on the drafting of a resolution adopting a policy regarding spending. But, Councilman Rowland?
Uh, had a conversation, well, Mr. Zach had been on vacation and been gone. And so we have not been able, um, to be able to get a policy for council. Um, and I've also had a conversation with Mr. J.J. Johnson, who, uh, both of them are needed because if we put together a resolution for spending, we gotta, um, it it doesn't work in a silo and I want to be able to bring it to a resolution. So I'm going to ask that we move this to the next meeting. I did have a conversation with Mr. Zach again today and he's been on vacation, so.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, item three be carried over to the next meeting. You've heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Question.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I have it. Item four, discussing possible action on updating an ordinance for departmental reports to be placed on the city council agenda. Councilman Rowland?
Same thing. I had a conversation with Mr. Zach, uh, Attorney Zach. Um, he did send, he should have sent an email to us today in reference to this issue. I asked him to to do this in writing because I think there was a a conversation in reference to whether, um, it could be, um, um, reports. I I just want to, for the record, uh, with this, we're going to still sit down and try to come up with a way. Uh, he he talked about, there's some case law that says that we can't have an open dialogue. We can't just put reports blanked. We would have to put specifically what's in the report, maybe some subtitles. And so we're going to talk about how do we do a police report and maybe have some additional subtitles, all the different reports that we used to get. Because just putting police department is not enough. And so, um, he sent this email that we're supposed to be working together on how do we bring something back for council. So we were definitely working on this. But again, we're going to make sure that we listen to our council in reference to the meeting.
And for the record, uh, council and our counselor, uh, Griffin does have copies of the posting necessary to discuss departmental reports uh, sent, as you said, today, this afternoon by Attorney Zach. So that'll be revisited as you all go forward. Uh, city council reports, Councilman Rowland?
Good evening, citizens. It's an honor, pleasure, it's an honor and privilege to serve. As I was driving from Austin to State Capitol, representing the Prairie View Chamber of Commerce, but I-